Chair Elmore, we're ready for you.
All right, you guys ready? Everybody ready? All right, I'll call the Thursday, April 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Harris, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise, face the flag, hand over your heart, salute our flag.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Great, okay. This time we'll take public comment. This is the time where we take public comment on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. Mr. Mosher, if you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Yes, I will. Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. The Commissioners who were here at the last meeting received and recommended the Council submit to the state a annual report, the city's annual report, on its progress meeting its Reno requirements. Among the projects noted in that report was the one that is on your agenda tonight, which if you were to approve it, commits to producing thirty-seven very low thirty-seven units affordable to families with very low incomes. What I wanted to point out to you is another project from the same developer was also reported, the one that you had previously approved or recommended approval of at thirteen hundred Bristol in the airport area. That one promised to produce twelve very low units and very low income units and twelve low income units. The reason I'm bringing your attention is if you watched what happened at the zoning administrator meeting last Thursday, the zoning administrator received a request and approved the request that those twelve low-income units be built, but not for low-income families. That seemed to me to be kind of a little bit of a bait and switch in the logic of why not building what had been promised is in the interest of the city. I understand it's in the interest of the developer. I don't understand why it's in the interest of the city, since you represent the city and its residents. I just wanted to let you know you have an opportunity still, since that was only last Thursday, to call that up for review if you wish to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment section. Staff requests for continuances. Are there any requests for continuances?
There are none.
Okay, moving on to the consent items. So we'll start with item number one, the meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on these minutes? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion or a second?
I'll move that they're adopted as with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll go ahead and second the motion. Call for a vote.
The motion carries four zero with Vice Chair Rosin, Secretary Harris, and Commissioner Barto abstaining.
Okay, move on. Public hearing items. Item number two, this is the residence of the Airport Village, PA 2023-0223. The site location is forty-five forty, forty-five seventy, forty-six hundred, forty-six thirty, forty-five twenty-five, forty-five thirty-three, forty-six forty-seven, MacArthur Boulevard. Real quick, I believe we have some people that are gonna abstain. Yeah, Commissioner Larry?
Yes, I'll have to recuse myself. I have business interest with one of the partners in the deal.
Harris?
I as well have business interest with a partner that has financial interest in the project.
Great. Staff, proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Elmore and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran and I'm the planner for this project for the residences at Airport Village. This project is located in the airport area specifically within Planning Area One of the Newport Airport Village planned community, as shown in green here. The actual project location consists of five of those six parcels within Planning Area One, as shown in blue, and is located across from the John Wayne Airport. To provide a little bit of background for the Newport Airport Village planned community, this planned community, otherwise known as PC sixty, was approved in 2020 and consists of Planning Areas One and Two. Within Planning Area One, it was allowed up to three hundred twenty-nine base dwelling units, exclusive of any additional density bonus units. Along with that adoption of the PC sixty zoning district was the Newport Airport Village Environmental Impact Report addendum, which was also approved in 2020. So this project is to implement the residential development consistent with the PC sixty zoning district. For this project, the applicant is proposing to demolish seven commercial buildings on those five parcels and the construction of four hundred forty-four rental units. The style of the construction will be a podium-style construction consisting of five levels of residential units and two levels of parking with eight hundred and six parking spaces. Sum up the dwelling units as previously stated. The base units allowed is three hundred twenty-nine base units, and with the proposal for density bonus, they are allowed a thirty-five percent increase in units, which is one hundred fifteen units. In total, they are allowed a total of four hundred forty-four units, and the project is to propose all four hundred forty-four of those residential units. The entitlements requested for the implementation of this project includes a major site development review, which is required for any new construction within PC sixty. Additionally, they are proposing an Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, or AHIP. This is to implement that thirty-five percent increase in density by providing thirty-seven affordable units, which will be the low-income units. As part of their proposal, they are requesting two development standard waivers and a development concession. And finally, the project proposes a tentative parcel map to merge those five lots into one lot. As part of the density bonus in AHIP, the applicant is entitled to two incentives or concessions. They are requesting one, which is to modify the affordable unit mix. As shown on the table, this shows the different unit types based off number of bedrooms and the total units. And then, as you can see on the right of the table, for very low-income units, most of those units will be for studio and one bedroom, a couple for two-bedroom, and none for three-bedroom versus a mix throughout all unit types. For development standard waivers, the applicant is entitled to an unlimited amount of development standard waivers, and they are requesting two. The first one is to weigh the density range of thirty to fifty dwelling units per acre. With the consolidation of the five lots, the total acreage at the maximum of fifty dwelling units per acre will not reach the three hundred twenty-nine base units. In order to reach three hundred twenty-nine base units, it's closer to fifty-three dwelling units per acre rather than fifty. The second waiver is for private open space, where the requirement is five percent of gross area per unit. Seventy of the units proposed is unable to achieve this minimum. This map shows Safety Zone Three and the sixty-five decibel noise contour relate to the airport area. Development to the west of these lines or development of residential units is not allowed west of these lines. The project, however, is proposing residential amenities west of these lines. This includes fitness center, yoga center, and a club room or clubhouse. A CECO memo was prepared by Placeworks. This did analyze the project's consistency with the previously approved Newport Airport Village EIR addendum. This also analyzed the consistency of residential amenities constructed within Safety Zone Three and the sixty-five decibel noise contour, and it concluded that the project is consistent with that EIR addendum, and no additional CECO review is required. As part of the adoption of the zoning district, there was a development agreement which outlined the project's share of public benefit, park-in-lu, and public safety fees as followed. For public benefit fees, there is a requirement of $2 million at the first building permit issuance and additionally another $2 million at issuance of certificate occupancy. For park-in-lu fees, there is a requirement of 1.25 million at the first building permit issuance and finally a public safety fee of $1 million at the first issuance of building permit. Staff is requesting two revisions to the conditions of approval. One is for condition number three. It references an old code section that no longer exists. The revision is just to provide the updated code section for accuracy. The second revision is for condition approval number eight. This is just to revise the language related to the residential amenity requirement, just to be consistent with PC sixty zoning district. There's no request for any deviations from the requirement. It's just to update the language to be consistent. Staff is recommending a public hearing and to find that all potential environmental effects have been adequately addressed in the previously adopted Newport Airport Village EIR addendum three and to adopt the resolution approving the project with the suggested modifications to the resolution. Thank you Commissioners. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also available, and they also have their own presentation.
Great, thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none? Okay, Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start down with Commissioner Barto.
Spoke with a representative of the developer.
None.
None. Had a brief call with a representative of the developer.
I spoke with a representative of the applicant.
Great. Okay, moving on. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation. They'd like to come up.
Good evening Chair Elmore and Members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for gathering tonight to consider our proposed project at Airport Village. My name is Satish Leinen. I'm a member of the Pasern Group. In the last few years, it's been my privilege to work for Mr. Ken Pasern and to have the opportunity to work in this great city of Newport Beach. I've worked with many cities entitling projects, and I can honestly say that the staff in Newport Beach is the best I've come across. I'd like to thank Jenny Tran, Liz West-Morland, and Rosalyn Ung for working with us and doing an extraordinary job on keeping the project on track. I'd also like to thank Jaime, Simone, and Yolanda for their guidance and oversight. The project we are presenting tonight is in partnership with John Saunders. This is the first project we're doing together. We'd like to thank him and his team for their contribution and partnership. Next, I'd like to introduce a few of our consultant team members who are present tonight and can answer any questions that may arise. We are fortunate to work with a very talented design team, which I think will be evident when you see the project presented this evening. Our architects are Erwin Yao and Corey Bidding from TCA. Our landscape architect is Mike Myers from Lifescapes, and our civil engineer is David Sloan from Tate and Associates. The Pasern Group headquartered in Newport Beach is a family office for Mr. Ken Pasern, who also resides in Newport Beach with his family. TPG is a long-term investor and owner, and it's this philosophy which drives our commitment and the responsibility to the communities we invest in. We back our commitment not only by becoming long-term community members in the cities we invest in, but also through the Pasern Foundation, where we give back to nonprofit groups in the city. I'm extremely proud of this project. I think it's really going to be exceptional. I'd like to bring up Corey from TCA Architects to give you an overview of the project and to show off their impressive design.
Thank you Satish. Thank you Commissioners. I'm Corey Bidding, Associate Principal at TC Architects. I'm the Studio Director, leading the Architecture Design Team. I'm excited once again to be presenting alongside the Pasern Group on what will be our fourth project in the Newport Beach Airport area. I'm eager to share with you the residents at Airport Village what I believe is an exciting project. To start, I want to quickly remind everyone of the current site conditions. In front of you are a few pictures taken around the site showing the current uses. As you can see, the site is occupied by a variety of commercial restaurant and office buildings, some of which currently sit vacant. With the current site uses, we believe our project will be a welcome addition to the airport area. Taking a quick step back, I want to briefly talk about the context, challenges, and opportunities this unique site created for the design team. The first element is access. Our site is uniquely bounded by three roads: Campus Drive to the north, Birch Street to the south, and MacArthur Boulevard to the southeast. With four existing drive entries onto the site, indicated here in green, the project has the unusual condition of having multiple opportunities for a front door experience. The second condition is the adjacency of John Wayne Airport, which borders the entire northern edge of the property. Addressing this neighboring use was a crucial item for the success of the project. The final challenge was taking full advantage of the view opportunities to and from the site. Site has unobstructed views of the airport and great opportunities for sunset views, as well an extended view corridor from MacArthur Boulevard. Zooming into our site, we're looking at the ground-level plan of the building. Indicated in green are the four existing driveway entrances onto the site. And MacArthur Boulevard was ultimately selected for the primary entry because of its visual prominence along the street frontage, and it provides the greatest level access with full left and right turn movements. The garage gate, noted in blue, is set back from the edge of the building and create a prominent covered entry plaza. This is meant to feel like the experience of arriving in a luxury hotel, where visitors' first experience of the project is enhanced materials, decorative columns, and storefront glazing. This showcases the high-quality design that's featured throughout the project. Secondary guest entrances are located mid-block and along Campus Drive and at the right center of the project. From these entry points, guests can park in the guest parking areas indicated here, and leasing offices and resident amenities are located directly next to the entry plaza for easy wayfinding and to promote pedestrian activity. In addition to the guest entries, the residents have two dedicated entrances along the Western Shared Drive. The first entrance, closest to Birch Street, provides access to the ground-level resident parking area indicated here, while the second garage entry, closest to Campus Drive, connects directly to the basement parking level. And additionally, an internal ramp provides a second point of access to basement level parking. Moving on to the podium level, we see the most unique feature of this project: over an acre and a half of courtyard with two pool areas linked together by a central open-air amenity. This expansive courtyard creates a wealth of opportunities for different activities and experiences, and we're excited to provide residents with a high-quality open space, which is not typically possible in this building typology. My colleague Mike Myers will discuss the courtyard details shortly, but I want to walk everyone through how we address the apartments architecturally. After several site studies, the team determined that embracing the site's adjacencies, such as the airport, as an asset to the project rather than treating them as a negative edge, was the best design solution. The first way we accomplished this was to create a stack of amenities under the northwestern corner of the site. This amenity stack, residents have a clear view of the airport while exercising in the double-height fitness center or relaxing in the wellness center above. And to top off the stack, residents can socialize in a two-level clubroom and roof deck while they watch planes take off into the sunset. Second strategy was to provide units with outward views of the city and airport. This takes advantage of the surrounding views and the city itself as an amenity to the project. It has the added benefit of creating this expansive courtyard we now have. Lastly, we introduce relief and generosity to the building massing by opening the courtyards at two locations. This allows snapshot views into and out of the courtyard while at the same time lessening the perceived impact of the building mass. It also provides the opportunity of grand staircases with direct connections to the ground level, which further strengthens the project's connection with the airport area. Now moving on to the elevations, we spoke about the airport's influence on the billing layout, and now here you can also see its influence on the elevations. Looking at the entry plaza, you'll see the flared balcony corners at the corner units and the enhanced building materials and metal panels, which give subtle nods to the form and materials of an airplane. Wood-toned accents provide warmth and soften the elevations to contrast the cooler look of the metal panels. At the entry plaza, you can see the decorative columns that signify the arrival in the project. And looking at the rest of the elevation, you'll notice the implementation of design elements at different scales, which take advantage of the long-view corridors. The philosophy behind this design decision was that the project, when observed from far, should evolve into a new experience as you travel closer. From a distance, you see the two larger corner masses flanking the middle facade of warmer color tones. As you move towards the project, you'll experience the building detailing of the metal panels at the corners, and the warmer tones will break down into vertical siding with wood-like features. And as you arrive at the entry plaza, you see the detailing of the wood look echoed in the ceilings and balconies and the finer detailing of the screening and storefronts. All this creates a cohesive design experience throughout the project. Continuing around the site, we're looking at what I believe could be the most interesting corner of the project. Here at the intersection of Birch and MacArthur, the building will be visible all the way from the intersection of Jamboree and MacArthur, which is almost a mile to the south. The larger massing here gives the building a strong silhouette that can be easily recognizable from a distance. Corner glass and wraparound balconies take full advantage of the long views down MacArthur, while the opening of the courtyard creates a relief and dynamic movement out of a prominent corner of the site. The two ends of the building flanking the opening draw you right into the courtyard and accentuate the grand staircase, which creates a layered terrace that lands on the inviting open plaza and connects to the greater pedestrian network. Finally, we finish our tour of the project at campus. Given the prominence of this building edge when viewed from the airport runway, the building facade uses big moves to create a visual interest that can be experienced from plane taking off or landing. The facade is stretched with horizontal banding and warmer tones, and the two corners are anchored with enhanced materials and the amenity stack. We believe our team has created a project that will be a great addition to the airport area. I'd like to welcome up Mike Myers to discuss the landscape design.
Hi, my name is Mike Myers with Lifescapes International. I'm a senior principal there.
Hey, Mike, why don't you move the mic a little closer to us so we can get on the right side of the screen.
Better? All right, thank you. Well, I'm excited to share this exciting landscape opportunity. This is really going to be a jewel in the city. You know, we, our background is hospitality-based, and this is right up our alley. It's really going to be a star. If you notice on this overall plan, you could see the lush landscaping. A generous amount of landscaping has been dedicated on the ground floor, as well as that, you know, acre and a half, over acre and a half, upper courtyard. You can see in this graphic, a lot of the, those circles and palm trees, there's a ton of plant material around and inside, especially in that courtyard, a lot of material to absorb noise, excuse me, noise and such. What's also real exciting about this site is the connections to the surrounding areas. You know, Corey was explaining how those stairways open up into the community. Well, we've really capitalized on that and created really a walkable element around the property, and I'll get to that in just a second as we go downstairs. On the ground level, what's real unique is to make it a walkable community, we have really a full, it's almost a quarter-mile loop around the property, which is unique. What's also different is we provided sort of a separate fitness path with that, so residents can spill out those, those long staircases and come out into the community, walk around with the dog. We also have five exercise stations on that fitness path that residents can use, which would be really nice. The landscape also kind of mirrors Corey's statement about being dramatic and large. So from those big distances, those large majestic palms will read and highlight the facades and the shapes of the building. But also, we focused a lot of energy and attention to the people scale, so the understory is going to provide shaded paths and shielding around the building and screening. We've also kind of to the bottom or the top-right area for our furry friends, so we have a bark park space for dogs. We're trying to kind of treat that as only, not only a social space for dogs, but also for people to get together. We think this is a great opportunity to have a community where the residents can find spaces and ways to get together and congregate. Podium level, this is where it really gets exciting. Again, we have a huge, it's over one and a half acres of space. We've divided it into two sort of distinct areas. I'll go into that in a little more detail. We really tried to sort of blur those inside-outside areas with lush planting, you know, courtyards that are courtyard-covered courtyard areas that are sort of open with planting going in and out, landscape around the edges, and then those two big, large pools and spas. Planting and seeding opportunities and circulation paths go all around, so residents can come out to those open spaces and enjoy it, whether it's a conversation with a friend, a small group, or a medium-sized group. We've divided it into, like I said, two pool areas. The first one is really more wellness and fitness-focused with a large swimming pool and a really big oversized hot water spa. The lap pool's, you know, over two thousand square feet, and we've sort of created some, you see those light-green areas are artificial turf zones where residents can do fitness, yoga, outdoor exercise, lounging, et cetera. This one really has a generous amount of planting around. We'll have trees and palms surround the entire area, so it'll really be a place to go. The social pool, this is our grand pool, this one's really inspired to have people come down, a place to see and be seen. It's going to have a big open deck, a large pool with a generous amount of edging for people to hang out and gather, a big spa that's sort of centered in the middle, so it'll sort of be a social active hub and be a nighttime activity zone. Large open spaces for activities, get-togethers, lounging, and then luxury cabanas around the edge for sunning, getting out of the sun, or even some of the ones that are tucked away for, you know, outdoor workstations. We'll also have around the perimeter and the edges and in the pool, poolside grilling, fire pits, and seating and lounging areas. I'll turn it back over to Satish. Thank you so much.
So we've spoken to many retailers in the airport area, and they're very excited to see this project be built. We believe this project, as well as our other residential projects in the airport area, will drive strong sales and retail growth. I'd like to close our presentation by reiterating our commitment to the city of Newport Beach and our commitment to the airport area. We have a vision for this area and believe in time it will become a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use village. The residences at Airport Village will help the city meet its Reno requirements, will drive retail and commercial growth, and is a significant step towards transforming the airport area. We appreciate your time and your consideration, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. While I have you, do you agree with the recommended conditions as they are stated in the, in the report?
Yes.
Including the updates to number three and number eight? Do I have to call that out?
Yes.
Including those? Great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? I'll start down with Commissioner Barto and work my way up. No? Commissioner Rosin, Vice Chair?
Just a real quick question about the east, I guess southeast side against that existing medical facility. Are you working with them? Are you going to have, how, will they still have access to that parking out there?
Yeah, there's a, there's an easement that runs there. We maintain that easement, and that provides them access into their parking area.
During construction, is that going to be problematic?
No, we'll keep, we'll keep that easement open.
There's enough room?
Correct.
And I did have a question about one of the conditions, and I think the applicant might be the best person to ask it. I have a, condition number twenty-one has a discussion about a deed notification, which I interpreted as for-sale product, but are you familiar with that particular condition? Right off the top of your head, probably not.
Not, not that number off the top of my head, sorry.
But I wanted to just bring that up, and so maybe staff, we could discuss that. That was my, my only other comment for you.
Great. Commissioner Sleen? No. Commissioner Langford? No. And just a quick question. Given the proximity to the airport, understanding you're not under the flight path, but the proximity to the airport, have you, have you taken into consideration, or are you guys using any additional materials for noise cancellation or anything else outside of the landscaping that's been talked about?
So we've done a preliminary acoustical analysis.
So we've done a preliminary acoustical analysis, and what that analysis has showed is that actually the noise from the airport is actually less noisy from, than MacArthur, and the noise within the courtyard is less noisy than the perimeter of the building. It's always part of our, you know, standard practice to do acoustical analysis, and during design development, we will do a more detailed analysis, and what that often ends up is with us putting, you know, specific types of windows to meet our acoustical requirements.
Okay, so as it sits right now, your determination is consistent with the other projects that you guys have developed in within the?
Correct.
Yeah, until further. Okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing to the other members of the audience if, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your name for the record.
Thank you again, Chair Elmore, members of the commission. My name is again Jim Mosher, and continuing somewhat on the previous, the theme of my previous comment, the, the city is facing a large RENA requirement, and many people in the city are, have been told or imagining or hoping that the airport area would go a long way towards producing the housing that we need in the categories that are difficult to accomplish, which are the very low, the low, and the moderate income categories, housing available or affordable to people with incomes in that range. The recently approved Housing Element regards this as a pipeline project, and it had a table in it, Table B2. I'm not sure the reason for the discrepancy. It was anticipating 320 rather than 329 base units here, and when the council approved that, they were expecting 48 units that would be available to low and very low-income families. Apparently, we're not quite getting those. We're getting only 37 available to very low. And they were also anticipating 32 units that would be available to people or families with moderate incomes, which would be what we kind of call workforce housing, which includes some city employees. It's not clear to me if the plan is to provide any moderate housing here, because I noticed there, as we heard, there's an outpouring of support from the local business community, and every single letter is referring to this as a luxury apartment development. So the, seems to me a little clash between the idea of a luxury apartment in an area that we're hoping would be workforce housing. And the other comment is about noise. I live in a noisy area myself, off of Irvine Avenue. I don't know how much you know about noise. When the noise level goes about, about 65 decibels, people cannot carry on a normal conversation. And as I think the applicant was alluding to, the EIR for the following item established it on MacArthur Boulevard, the continuous noise level from the traffic has a daily average of about 70 decibels, which would be interrupted by the impulse noise from the airplanes going over. One would think you would want to know what the noise environment of this was before approving it, rather than after approving it, but I think those balconies facing MacArthur are not going to be really the outdoor amenity that it's being promoted as, and I think they will be probably a little unpleasant, but somebody should actually measure what the noise is at that location.
Thank you. Next speaker? Are there any other speakers? Okay. Seeing none, applicant, would you wish to respond to any of those comments or, okay? Staff, any comments from you for the project or the record?
Just a few comments. So the project is consistent with the legislative approvals for the Newport Airport Village Plan Community that was approved by the city council, and that assumed a total of 329 base units. The project's consistent. In terms of the potential noise impacts, the city's general plan does have a policy and 1.5 that does anticipate infill projects would be exposed to higher levels of roadway noise, and similar to the noise reduction measures to address airplane noise, it also allows for additional measures. So the same conditions we have in place to help mitigate against the higher noise levels from the airplanes would also help address and mitigate against the higher roadway noise. So through project implementation, it would ensure that the interior noise levels are compliant with the city standards.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for a comment, discussion, a motion, and an action. Commissioner Langford, any comments for, I'll start with you this time.
Did it look like I had something to say? It's clearly a very thoughtful project that's taken many years to put together. I likewise would like to thank our staff, who I know have been working on it with the Pacern Group for a long time. It looks like a great project. I think our airport area that we've been planning on for a long time is finally seeing the, you know, the fruits of our labors with the planning and now the housing going in. So I'm looking forward to this project and many other projects going in the airport area, and I'm inclined to vote for the project.
Right. Any other comments? Commissioner Saleen, Commissioner Vice Chair Rosine?
Yeah, I share that sentiment. You know, this is what 50-plus units the acre looks like. It's a good-looking building. There's not many places that this works in the city. This is a good place to implement this, so I'll be supporting this project.
Great. Commissioner Saleen?
I just again want to, you know, thank the Pacern Group and the team for putting together this great-looking project, and I really appreciate all the extra parking that's being provided. I think that's awesome.
Great. Commissioner Bartow, any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bartow? Why don't you turn your mic and let everybody know?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Staff, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations to the applicant. Okay, we are moving on. We'll wait for our colleagues to come back in, and then we'll go to our next item. Colleagues? Colleagues? Okay, moving on. Item number three, this is the Housing Malament Implementation Program Amendment, PA 2007-0245. The site location is citywide. I believe we have some recusals here, so I'll pause.
Yeah, Chair Elmore, I'll be recusing myself on this next item, as my employer partially owns parcels identified as housing opportunity sites.
Right.
Chair Elmore, I will be recusing myself. My employer has a financial interest in housing in the city.
Yeah. Okay, staff, Ben, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, commissioners. Ben Zadiba, principal planner with the Planning Division, and I have the privilege of providing you this presentation on the Housing Element Implementation Program Amendments. So just by way of a brief background, the city received its RENA assignment for the crowd, Regional Housing Needs Assessment Assignment, in 2020. We have been in process of both planning for those units and implementing the zoning for those units ever since. City Council adopted the Housing Element in September of 2022, and subsequently, that document was certified as statutorily compliant by state Housing and Community Development Department in October. And as part of our follow-through in the policy actions, we must rezone properties identified as housing opportunity sites in the inventory by February of 2025. So why are we here? Just kind of recapping, the Housing Element is the plan, the implementation is the action. So without the action, we haven't really implemented the plan that we put forward. So this evening before you, for consideration on your recommendation to council, we're looking to amend land use element goals and policies for consistency with the Housing Element to implement that plan, amending the coastal land use plan, including zoning overlays to both Title 20 and Title 21, and then creating objective design standards to help maintain quality design and architecture in Newport Beach, eliminating subjectivity and creating certainty for developers. And then the last part is the SEQA component, and for that, we've prepared a draft program environmental impact report, which we'll talk about a little further in this presentation. I'm going to talk through each of these implementing actions, starting with the land use element update. I just want to note that the city council established a three-member general plan update steering committee, as well as a 30-member general plan advisory committee. The general plan advisory committee has subcommittees based on each topical area or element. There is a land use element subcommittee. The draft policies put forward this evening were vetted through the GPAC and the steering committee, as well as the land use element subcommittee, through multiple subcommittee meetings, multiple general plan advisory committee meetings, and multiple steering committee meetings. We've posted them online several iterations and made revisions based on stakeholder input. We most recently revised and posted those again on January 16th, 2024, and actually posted them since in March prior to going forward with the planning commission agenda item. The key changes to the land use element are a series of new policies that fold into the four series, and they basically set forward a framework to allow the city to provide and create overlay zoning districts that help to implement the Housing Element Inventory Opportunity Sites. I want to just call attention primarily to proposed policy 4.4, which again really provides the operating framework for the rezoning overlay. We have it categorized by focus areas, and these are no different from what you see in the Housing Element. So again, this is simply implementing a plan that has already been adopted. We are looking to include density ranges that are consistent only with the Housing Element, and furthermore, including development limits within each of those focus areas. And in this slide, I just want to note that these development limits do not include pipeline units, which are those that are already entitled, including the one you just approved, as well as those that have been applied for and are currently in the pipeline and under review of the city. They also do not include density bonus units or units created under state law, special provisions. So this is only base development units in each of those focus areas. The remaining policies really look to just clarify that the existing land uses are not being affected. This is not mandating that housing must be built on these parcels. We're not creating nonconformities. We're simply providing additional opportunity for the properties of these parcels if the private market turns to a way that they want to make these sites residential redevelopment projects. Again, kind of similar to what you just saw and approved, taking down underperforming land use and putting it back with residential product. The last policy to highlight is 4.7, which talks about kind of a similar line of thinking, where we would be allowing a transfer of development rights. And to drill into that, if we were to take down an office building, or a developer was to take down an office building, the trips afforded to that office building would not go away. They would remain in that statistical area and could be transferred to another property. So the, the way to think of that is, in the airport area, as residential units come online, it's a given that there's going to be a demand for commercial uses. So to plan for that, the office intensity that came down could be reallocated to another site to allow redevelopment as a commercial shopping center or maybe a small grocery store. We're accounting for that through that redevelopment and transfer of development rights to other parcels. So I want to take a pause here and just note that because of the general plan land use element amendment, the city does have Charter Section 423 related to traffic density increases. This would be considered a major general plan amendment because it is increasing overall development thresholds by more than 100 dwelling units and 100 trips across several statistical areas. So regardless of what action you take this evening and any action that the council takes, the ultimate decision will lie in the hands of the voters. Going into the implementing action for overlay zoning and development standards, again, these have been posted online several times. What you see on the slide here is an example of a recent posting that shows changes made in highlights. Every time we've posted, we've shown the changes made since the prior iteration in a highlight to make it very clear what has been changed. So the takeaway here is this is consistent with the Housing Element. It is teed up by the land use element policies we just shared. It prescribes a process for housing development in these focus areas, which again is implementing the Housing Element only, provides development limits that align with the new land use element policies, and are no different from those in the Housing Element in the policy actions. It provides clear development standards for residential development with an overlay that is the intent, because the underlying zoning may not be appropriate for a residential development to take place. So this sets forward very specific development standards related to setbacks, heights, and parking. There are also area-specific standards. We just had a project in the airport here as the prior item. This talks about enhanced sound attenuation, and another one to note is in Coyote Canyon, if that project comes online, the developer is going to have to put forward a parks and trail plan that connects to other parks and trails in the area. Part of this is the overlay zone maps. So what you have before you is the airport area and Newport Center, probably our two most prominent focus areas in the city. Draw your attention to the HO1 airport area, Environs area. That's a mouthful. The legend at the top left talks to height limitations that are being increased through this action. This is the only parcel or the only project site, inventory site, that is being increased from a height perspective. That is because the current underlying height is 18 feet, and that is not appropriate for the densities that the Housing Element intends for that property. So right off the bat, we're looking to only increase the height for those parcels, and that's again because 18 feet is far too low for any sort of residential development at this density that we are planning for. Every site that's colored in dark gray is an, is a Housing Element inventory site and would be part of the overlay. And I just want to note that at this time, the city has not put forward overlay zoning maps for the Title 21 coastal zoning code amendments. However, those would be no different from what you see here. You would just simply would only see the properties that are identified and within the coastal zone boundaries. So as far as objective design standards are concerned, again, the real intent here is to help protect quality architecture and create quality architecture in Newport Beach. State law has changed frequently over the past few years to eliminate the city's ability to provide subjective design standards. Things like quality architecture, quality window treatments are no more. We really need to lean in and create clear, objective design standards that are very easy for developers to have the certainty they need to put a project forward and know that the city cannot come down and say that we don't like those windows, we don't like the architecture, it's not appropriate for the area. The applicability would be for multi-unit residential developments and mixed-use developments with densities of 20 dwelling units or greater, and it would apply to both discretionary projects and buy-ripe projects. I just want to note that the objective design standards, and more specifically, the ones that were given to you as additional materials, incorporate feedback from the planning commission from the September study session that we had last year, as well as stakeholders, including designers, developers, and property owners. Each time we posted, we would get comments, and we would incorporate those comments as appropriate. This is just an example. On the left-hand side, you'll see almost a table of contents of what the objective design and development standards covers, and then on the right, you'll see an example of some of the language. So this talks about horizontal modulation and making sure we're not getting just straight-up-and-down boxes. I like to call them shoeboxes. Here, we make sure that we have enough modulation on the building to provide visual interest in architectural quality, providing light and air and open space for the public realm. I don't have a separate slide on what this entails, because again, the local coastal program amendment involves changes to the coastal land use plan policies, as well as the Title 21 coastal zoning code to include overlay zoning for the coastal properties that are Housing Element opportunity sites. This is going to be no different from the zoning component. It's going to be simply consistent in implementing the same within the coastal zone. From an environmental clearance standpoint- From an environmental clearance standpoint, we prepared a program environmental impact report that studied every topic under the California Environmental Quality Act. On the left-hand side, you'll see the less-than-significant topics. On the right-hand side, you'll see significant and unavoidable. But I do think an important note with a program environmental impact report is you have to imagine the scale of this analysis involves every single inventory site that I've shown or that is indicated on the housing element Appendix B, which includes several hundred parcels. So if any one of those parcels surpasses a threshold under the California Environmental Quality Act, you now have a significant and unavoidable impact documented in the entire document. So for example, aesthetics talks about lighting and glare. That's only related to Banning Ranch. So if development were to come on adjacent to Banning Ranch or in Banning Ranch, there would be a significant and unavoidable impact as it relates to aesthetics. That's not a citywide thing. That's specifically related to that single site. Similarly, for noise, there is an impact on a roadway segment, and that's a single roadway segment. That triggers a threshold, so now we have a significant unavoidable impact. Just to make sure that's very clear that this is not saying that citywide, there's going to be a noise issue. It's very specific to one area under some of these topical areas you see. And I just want to emphasize here that all documents that I have discussed have been made available for public review. Several iterations have been posted over time, and the SEQA document was posted in February with a public review period that was 46 days. And to that end, we received seven letters, two from individuals and the rest being from either interested parties or agencies. All of those comment letters have been addressed in the responses to comments prepared by Kim Lee Horn and provided as part of this staff report. So as expected next steps, because of the airport area sphere of influence and development with the Airport and Byron's Land Use Plan, we do have to take this to the Airport Land Use Commission for consideration. Based on the action that the Airport Land Use Commission took on our housing element itself, we anticipate that they will find it inconsistent. So we will be going back to city council to issue a notice of intent to overrule ALUX and consistency determination. And further, we are looking to go to city council in July, tentatively on the 23rd, for a public hearing. And what this would do is it would approve all of the implementing documents along with the ballot resolutions. Ultimately, we have to provide ballot language and all the resolutions related to the ballot to the county by August 9th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. That's ingrained in my head. If we miss that, that's a very bad thing. We have to get on to the November 5th, 2024 ballot, and to do that, we have to make that deadline. Just wanted to point out some accountability headlines, if you will. A relatively new component of state HCD is the Accountability Enforcement Unit, and these are some older headlines. I didn't Google any new headlines for today's presentation because I think these highlight a pretty good swath of the accountability components and ramifications the city could be up against if the housing element were to be determined to be noncompliant, and we missed the February 2025 deadline. I like the Beverly Hills headline. Basically, imagine that you or your neighbor wants to come in and pull a pool construction permit. Sorry, you can't do that. State says no. And then the other two headlines that are important to point out are for Huntington Beach and Fullerton, both getting into public and private litigation. So the city would see increased public and private litigation exposure. And then the last one to highlight is builder's remedy. I'm sure you all have heard of that. I know everyone sees it in the news. And that essentially allows a builder or developer to propose any residential development project on any site in the city regardless of the current zoning standards. It's a very real thing, and I think that Santa Monica was the very first city to have that builder's remedy ramification come into play. Not shown here, the state could also levy substantial fines of the city, taking away also state funding. So there's a very real impact and consequence if the city does not perform on the housing elements plan and actually implement those actions. With that, I would leave this slide up for you. These are the key takeaways. I just want to highlight that there are development limits within each focus area through the overlay, and those all tie back to the housing element and eventually the land use element. Everything will be consistent, and they will provide an average density range as well as a maximum unit count. I do want to also emphasize again that pipeline units and density bonus unit projects are not, or density bonus units rather, are excluded from the total allocation within each focus area. This is only related to base units. The draft documents that I talked about have all been made available for review. We've gotten stakeholder input and have revised them over time. And again, the schedule moving forward, public hearing at city council in July, ultimately leading to a ballot vote in November to meet the mandated state deadline of February 2025. That concludes my presentation. Jaime and I are available for questions. I also want to note that Kim Lee Horn is available. They are our SEQA consultant, and they are very well qualified to answer any SEQA questions you may have. I'm going to leave it on this slide for you just so you can see the key takeaways. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
What's that date again that's ingrained in your head?
Oh, August 9th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
There you go. You passed the test. Congrats. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Barto, start down there with.
A few somewhat technical questions, and really more for clarity in the EIR. Going through it, I think there's a recognition that there's requirements from the state in order to do all this work, and I think the city's done a fantastic job pushing forward, you know, for the last couple of years, really, I know, to implement, to get towards that August 9th date. Along those lines, a few things in the EIR just kind of maybe reflect the natural conflict in that where there's a requirement to increase the housing. Oh, by the way, there's going to be 35% on top of that. And there's also this, you know, for instance, greenhouse gas standard for units over certain sizes. You know, one thing that, you know, kind of showed up, reviewing it, you know, in Section 4.7, there's essentially a requirement for residential projects not to exceed South Coast AKMB's target of 3,000 million tons of CO2 equivalent without, you know, reduction. And I think within, again, just for clarity, you know, providing maybe more specifics in it just to, you know, make it kind of a clearer process as to, I know there's challenges and how you're going to mitigate it, how you're going to point to, point your finger to say this is how mitigation's going to work. I don't know if there's any of that from Kim Lee Horn, or if it's just clarification that can be done moving forward. And then kind of along the same lines in Section 4.2, there's kind of a discrepancy between, you know, this is a whole issue in Southern California where we're in exceedance of certain PM 2.5 ozone, other, you know, specific pollutants. And then anytime you're doing a project, you're like, well, you know, we're doing the EIR. Yeah, we're going to consider to succeed this, and that's true for the whole basin. And I just want to make sure that we're providing an EIR that's defensible moving forward. So for some clarity on just kind of getting that inconsistency, specifically in maybe Section 4.2.6 and Section 4.2.1, or the table in 4.2.6, and it just looked like maybe just make it clear for the ability to mitigate. And then similarly in Section 4.1.7, this is the issue of utilities where you mentioned that it's unattainable or there's no clear attainment. But with urban water management plans, you know, which are, you know, done regularly, I know there's not an existing urban water management plan that's going to be able to resolve a plan that's just happening right now, especially with all the implementation requirements. But maybe just, rather than just saying it's not attainable, if there's any clarity that this is how it probably will be attained, but I know it's tricky in AIRs. So again, just recognizing the conflict between these issues, I think it's probably just worth maybe clarifying if there's an opportunity to do that in the EIR itself.
Thanks, Commissioner Barto. I'd be glad to invite Ace Malissis up from Kim Lee Horn to address your questions. The minute you said that complicated acronym for GHD, I can't handle that. So I'll give that to Ace. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ace Malissis with Kim Lee Horn. Yes, to answer your question about the greenhouse gas emissions, the 3,000 metric ton threshold is, I believe you're correct in what your comment that it's not an adopted threshold. However, it is supported by substantial evidence. It is a threshold that has been used by the city, and it's used throughout Southern California. So, you know, we've identified that. The city uses it in its SB 743 implementation guidelines that reference that. So our mitigation measure identifies that as a screening level in order to identify when a project might have to do more detailed studies. So, you know, if an applicant can show that they're below 3,000, then further study wouldn't need to be done, but you might need to do more if you're above that 3,000 screening threshold. So it's a screening threshold. It's designed to be, you know, all of our analyses are designed to be conservative, and I believe that was part of your concern as well. The mitigation measure also has, allows the city to adjust that threshold. You know, greenhouse gases are complicated, and the issues are complicated, and they're very dynamic. The regulations are changing constantly. So having, you know, an allowance for the city to be able to update that threshold as necessary, you know, was included in there in order to just account for that.
Okay.
And then for your question on air quality, it's correct. We show, you know, there's an impact for consistency with air quality plans. And then we have, you know, later on in the analysis, we actually do, it's a programmatic analysis, meaning that we don't have a specific project, you know, development project proposal in mind, but we are analyzing the development, the maximum development potential. So, you know, we've modeled various scenarios and potential development scenarios, and the smaller development scenarios are below the air district's thresholds on a pounds-per-day basis. However, there, on some of the larger, we did a 500 dwelling unit scenario and a 600 dwelling unit scenario, and we do exceed the ROG emissions threshold. So, you know, as a conservative approach, we identify that as a significant unavoidable impact, even though there is no specific development proposal at this time. But there is a potential that, you know, impact could occur, you know, as future development projects come online, they would have to do more specific analysis to show whether they're above or below that threshold. And then if they are above, mitigation would need to be identified. Going back to the plan consistency, you know, we're showing a lot of less-than-significant impacts on some of those scenarios that I described. However, you know, we're, there's a couple of things. There's multiple criteria with determining if you're consistent with the air quality management plan. One of those is, are you creating emissions that could exceed, you know, the ambient air quality standards? And because we have that ROG exceedance, we're saying yes, we are, and that's a conservative approach. The second part of that criteria is, are you consistent with the growth projections? And because this project is, you know, anticipates a lot of growth beyond what is currently anticipated in the general plan, we've, you know, we've concluded that, you know, it's not consistent currently with the air quality management plan because the air quality management plan that the air district does is based on general plans for the cities throughout the jurisdiction. That, you know, the city, once this is adopted, it will become incorporated into, you know, as the air district updates their plans, it will become incorporated, so it wouldn't really be inconsistent anymore. But again, conservatively, we've taken that approach. Hopefully, that answers it. Sorry for the long-winded response.
Thank you for the response.
Oh, and I believe you had a question about water supply. Now, I'm not a water expert. I'm the air and GHD person, but, you know, I believe that for water supply, again, it's a similar situation with a growth, you know, even though this is something that would be incorporated into the urban water management plans, at this time, I don't think they've included, you know, anticipated this type of growth in their urban water management plan. So even though it's something that can be accommodated, as the water supply assessment showed, it's still just, it's not in the plans yet, and it will be, but, you know, in the next round, but not there yet. So conservatively, we just want to call that out as potentially a significant impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll open the public hearing for the rest of these. Any other comments or questions of staff? Yeah, Commissioner Celine.
Benjamin, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a quick question on one of the slides. You mentioned that the Airport Land Use Commission would probably not be signing off on the plan. Why?
Very good question. So the way I like to frame this is, think of the coastal commission. All of these different oversight bodies have their own agenda and their own interests. Airport Land Use Commission, their interest is the airport and protecting the airport and eliminating potential land use conflicts. So the Airport Land Use Commission's Airport and Byron's Land Use Plan has provisions to discourage residential and sensitive noise areas or in areas that are considered safety zones where there could be a potential for a crash. So putting any residential adjacent to the John Wayne Airport is not something that they look at favorably, and therefore, they would likely find our plan inconsistent with their Airport and Byron's Land Use Plan.
So that we're up to 50 units per acre, they'd rather see zero, essentially?
Essentially, yes.
Just fields and...
Great. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
One quick question, kind of piggybacking on Mr. Mosher's letter in regarding shut-off of it potentially. If policy goals changed out of Sacramento, or perhaps a court case made its way through and granted cities more rights, would it take another, and assuming that this gets voted in November, would it take another general plan amendment to perhaps change these overlays or restrict units, bring it back?
It's a very good question. It's hard to tell how the legislative landscape will change and could affect this plan. The current general plan, or the proposed policies are just purely matching the housing element's implementation. So in order to really unravel everything, we'd have to go back to the housing element first, I think, and that's not something that I'd see the state doing. But to answer your question directly, yes, we would likely have to do a general plan amendment and another zoning code amendment to curtail this back. But there are current provisions in place that basically would not allow a city to remove that density opportunity once we put it in place. So I don't see that happening.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Larry? No. Okay. Open the public hearing. Anybody else from the audience that wish to talk on this item? Please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Omar, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. And first, I want to make it clear, I think we have a good and very professional staff working under difficult circumstances. But the circumstances are difficult enough and the complexity of this enough that much of this I don't really think is quite ready for adoption yet. I also want to make it clear that I'm a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, one of the 30 members of that. Our recommendation, which was only regarding the land use element policy changes, was not unanimous. And I want to make it clear, I'm speaking not as a GPAC member, but as an individual. Indication of things not being quite ready for adoption, if you paid attention to the maps and looked at the implementation... Oh, I also wanted to mention, not all of this is going for a vote in November. The only part that would be going to the vote is the land use element changes. But in the zoning implementation, I'm looking at handwritten page 32, it's showing the Lido Village properties as being part of the Dover-West Cliff area. And if you look at the maps that were released yesterday or whenever it was, you'll see that the Lido Village cannery is actually in West Newport. So I'm not sure that the things that keep moving around. I don't even know that the cap numbers that are proposed are now correct or need to be revised or how it will shake out. But I did want to mention my major philosophical differences I have with this. One of them, Commissioner Harris touched upon, I think there was a general understanding... Harris touched upon, I think there was a general understanding that the implementation of this would have built into it something that if we ever met our RENA requirement citywide, the opportunity to participate in these housing opportunities would be ended or terminated automatically at that point. This seems to be a permanent entitlement that will be going into our general plan. Without such a sunset provision to it, that's a problem. Number two is it doesn't seem to be really tailored towards what we need to accomplish with RENA, which is to provide the housing affordable to families in the very low, low and moderate income. It's leaving it totally up to the developers how they use these units, which I don't think is right. And then third, you might find this odd for me, I don't understand why we're restricting the opportunity to these very few sites. The city had to demonstrate it had enough sites available, but once it has done that, the housing opportunities, I think, should be allowed to a broader area. If you look at this map of the airport area, there's one tiny little property up here, number 52, it's at 4750 Von Karman. It's in an office complex. That particular property is identical to all the other little offices around it. Why would this property owner's value be increased by having housing opportunity and the adjacent units not? It does not make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience wish to talk on this item?
Seeing none. Mr. Mosher got me thinking, staff, when he talked about caps and zoning regulation. When I was reading the EIR, should there be a finding that the density bonuses do not count towards the sub-area caps? And the reason I say that is I feel like it's conflicting, because the zoning regulations are clear that the density bonuses do not count towards those caps. So I just think it would be pertinent to confirm that these two are consistent.
No, it's a great question. I will say that within the project description for the Program Environmental Impact Report, there are statements about the density bonus units not being included explicitly in the analysis. However, the analysis, as we've touched upon, is extremely conservative in that it is not contemplating any replacement of any existing uses. It's all additive opportunities. In other words, we're planning for this number of rezoned units on top of existing development. So therein, we're expecting that any density bonus units are likely to fall within the currently anticipated development limits for each of the focus areas. And I'll also add that within the project description, we have the Title 20 and Title 21 overlay language, which has a footnote that very specifically says that density bonus units are excluded from the development limits within those tables. So staff feels that that concern would be adequately covered within the project description of the EIR.
Okay. But do you think we should still clarify it, just for simplicity purposes? So?
Staff could look to do that through potentially the findings that come forward for the Environmental Impact Report. You'll note, we do not yet have those findings. Those will be provided to City Council for consideration.
Okay, okay, great. When I was reading through the EIR, something that caught my attention was the CNL lines. This was a kind of a hot topic within the city not too long ago. So I was kind of diving a little more into that. And in the noise section of 411, it talks about areas that are not allowed within the CNL line 65, and it's saying that, you know, parcels are not. And my concern, and I think I brought this up in another meeting, but I think it should be sites as imposed to the word parcel, for clarification purposes, within that, that are allowed within that 65 CNL.
Yeah, good question, Chair Omar. I'll take this question. So I think I actually presented the noise policy and code changes to the planning commission, I think it was like last summer, and that was something that came up. So we did make a change to the implementing section of the zoning ordinance, which is in Section 203080. And that does clarify it's parcels or sites. And so the intent is the development include, the development site includes multiple parcels, but we're really looking at the development site as a whole. And so that clarification-
So is it site, or is it parcel?
It's site, and it's, the intent is site, and our implementing zoning ordinance is clear that it's site.
The intent is site?
Yes.
Okay. So for clarification, there's no further clarification needed on that, in your opinion?
No, I mean, we can, again, when we look at the findings for adoption, we can clarify that. The general plan policies are set, but the zoning ordinance that implements those policies is pretty clear.
Okay, great. I think that's it for me. Anybody other questions? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. If anybody else has any comments for staff, and bring it back to us for a, we're going to do a vote on this, right? Correct?
Yes.
You'd be making a recommendation of the vote. Yeah, a recommendation of a vote. Great, okay. Commissioners?
Just, I guess, more have a comment than anything. And when this all came down a few years ago, I mean, I was one of those, I was just like, you know, Sacramento was cramming all this stuff down our throats, and was kind of more in line with some of the, at least in my personal thinking, more in line with other cities about, let's just take this to court, all of this. But I will say that I think our city's done a really good job on this, and what they've done to be able to highlight some maybe underserved areas in terms of residential opportunities. And, you know, I think for us to be able to get our RENA numbers together, that's really going to, at least in a lot of ways, not disturb our current residential footprints around the cities. And having this plan approved and certified by the state keeps all of those land use rights in place without any such things as a builder remedy or something like that coming into an existing residential space. I think Commissioner Harris brings up a good thought, though, about if, you know, something does change on the state level, how that comes back and how that wouldn't happen. But it sounds like it's more of a land use right once this is passed. So we'd I guess have to come back and change that. But, you know, knowing that this is, was it 4,400 residential units, and this is not the city going out, I think we all know that, but maybe some people don't know, this is not the city going out and being a developer. This is just zoning. So having all of those come online, and the real market constraints in this day and age with interest rates and whatnot, I don't see 4,400 units getting right off the starting block next week. So I think the city and staff and everyone's done such a great job, and, you know, I'm definitely inclined to support this. And there may be little things here and there, as Mr. Mosher brings up, but I think all in all, it's a really good, I thought what we've done is really good. And for me, such a big skeptic of what the state, and I think our meat is due, I'm happy what we were able to make out of it. So I'll be supporting it for the, supporting the recommendation.
Great. Any other comments from the commissioners or a motion? Commissioner Harris?
Just echoing, thanks, staff. Appreciate all the hard work, obviously. I mean, this is a really difficult situation. I don't think there's a perfect here, and especially all the volunteers and all the advisory groups and the committees. It's just push to the border, and it's really difficult in the city that's, you know, 98% built out. I think they've done an admirable, everyone's done an admirable job thus far. I'll support. So I'll make a motion to adopt.
Great. We have a motion. I'll go ahead and second that motion, staff. Great work with what you're, what you're giving. We have a motion and a second.
I meant to vote on that. Clear too quick.
Microphones, voting.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
No, congratulations, staff. Okay, item number four, we're moving on, staff and commissioner items. Motion for reconsiderations. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, moving on. Item number five, report by the community development director for request matters, which planning commission member would like to place on a future agenda item. Jaime?
Yes, I'm Emilio, acting deputy director. Just want to note that at the next City Council meeting on April 23rd, the City Council will be hearing the appeal of the Orange County Sanitation District Pump Station, which the planning commission approved back in January. And then for May, we have items for the May 9th Planning Commission agenda. We have legislative approvals for a residential project at 1600 Dove Street, and then a variance at 1020 White Souls Lane. And then on May 23rd, we do have a number of items scheduled as well. And then I did just want to take this opportunity to congratulate Principal Planner Ben Zadila. I'm not sure if you're aware, however, he is a current MBA student at UCI, and he was picked to participate in an OC Real Estate Challenge by the NAIOP against Chapman University. And they had the competition last night, and Ben's team did win. This is the first win for UCI out of a three-year competition against Chapman. So I just want to recognize this.
Way to go, anteaters. Congratulations, Ben. Way to go. Yeah, yeah. Other anteaters, I think, are over here. Great to you guys. Yep. All right. Thank you for, anybody from the audience wish to comment on that item? Okay. Number six, requests for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.